I'll call to order the Washington County Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting of May 2nd, 2019. Ask for a roll call, please.
[inaudible]
Here.
[inaudible]
Here.
Here.
Kelsey, not here. Robert Doherty.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Helm.
Here.
Approval of minutes of March 28th, 2019. Entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any correction or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any last minute markups to the agenda, Nathan?
Agenda is ready to go as presented, sir.
Okay. Have a motion for approval on agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Reese Residential.
This proposal is located west of Winslow off of Hidden Valley Road, also known as Washington County 229. It is located entirely within the unincorporated area of the county. The proposed residential CUP location is shown here outlined in black. There are several existing buildings, including two existing residences. This slide shows the applicant's rendition of the 1.6 acre parcel. The yellow arrow indicates the proposed septic field. The black line at the bottom of the screen indicates Washington County 229. The bottom left portion of the drawing displays in red the proposed residence. Looking south, I conducted a site visit on April 4th, 2019. This photo was taken facing the south along Washington County 229. On the left, you can see one of the two currently occupied residences on the property. The yellow arrow indicates the proposed residence, which is currently vacant. This image was taken facing west and features the front of the proposed residence. This image was taken facing east and features the proposed septic field from the steps of the proposed residence. Staff recommends approval of the proposed Reese Residential CUP with conditions. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Yes, what is the acreage of the smaller subdivision?
I'm sorry, the parcel?
Yeah, the parcel.
1.96 acres.
Is there anyone here from the public that wanted to address this one? All right, hearing none. Your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Reese Residential CUP.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none. Dutch Mills Wireless Facility CUP.
Smith Communications is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a wireless communications facility in an area that is zoned agricultural, single-family residential of one unit per acre. The proposed Dutch Mills Wireless Communications Facility is located in the southwest portion of the county in the community of Dutch Mills. Here is a zoomed in view of the area. And here is a closer view of the site. Can you guys hear me? The proposed wireless communications facility will utilize a 100 by 100 lease area along the southern portion of the property owned by Larry and Rosemary Medema. Please know that this request is only for the conditional use permit. Tower review and permitting will come at a later date if the conditional use permit request is granted. Here is what the lease area with access looks like once mapped. And here is Section 11-200, which explains the criteria for allowance of conditional uses. On March 29th, Smith Communications submitted an application with appropriate fees for a conditional use permit request. They detailed the need for a wireless communications facility in the southwest portion of the county. On the screen is the bottom two-thirds of the county. The green stars represents existing cell towers. The pink triangle in the lower left-hand represents where the proposed tower will be. There is an extensive gap in the southwest area of the county for wireless communication. The nearest three towers are approximately 6.3 miles, 7.8 miles, and 8.8 miles away. When staff conducted a site visit on April 15th, it was noted that indeed there was a lack of solar coverage. This is the image of where the proposed facility will be, and I am standing at the entrance of the proposed access drive. And here is the site distance to the north and the site distance to the south. And this is what is directly across the street from the proposed facility's entrance. Section 11-307 states that towers will be located so that no residences are within 150 percent of the height of the tower. The tower is proposed to be 285 feet tall, which means the setback distance is 427.5 feet, which is represented, I'm sorry, 417 feet, which is represented by the dotted purple line. The nearest residence is approximately 417 feet. So the applicant states that they will obtain a written consent in agreement of the tower from the property owner. If this written consent cannot be obtained, then the tower will not be allowed to complete its tower review portion. Section 11-306 states that all towers shall be set back from the nearest edge of all roads by at least 20 feet plus the height of the tower. Again, the tower is proposed to be 285 feet tall. That plus the 20 feet equals 305 feet. The edge of the road from the base of the proposed tower is approximately 326 feet. South Highway 59 is also a state highway, so all permitting to connect to it will have to go through the Arkansas Department of Transportation. The tower is designed to co-locate up to three antennas. If the conditional use permit is granted and if the tower review is approved, AT&amp;T will be the first provider on the tower. The applicant is proposing vinyl slats inserted into chain link fence to assist with visual mitigation. This is standard for most wireless communication facilities. On April 18th, a total of 11 notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project parcels' boundaries. Staff received one comment in opposition of the facility stating that the project is too close to their property and that they are concerned about future health issues that may arise from it. An updated copies of the comments received are in your update packet. So due to the lack of quantifiable data to guide the process of assessing compatibility, staff urges the planning board to listen to the opposition from the members of the community and to listen to the applicant's claim that the proposed use is compatible based on the need for a wireless communications facility in the area. Once and if both sides of the issue have addressed the board, please weigh the two sides to determine if the proposal has met these compatibility requirements. These are the conditions of approval. Any questions?
Questions for staff? All right, maybe we get back to you, see if there's anyone here from the public that wanted to address this?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Dutch Mills Wireless Facility CUP subject to staff recommendations.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, thank you very much. Thomas Pearson Road Wireless, another wireless, huh? We're on a roll.
BRT Group LLC is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a wireless communications facility in an area that is zoned agricultural, single-family residential of one unit per acre. The proposed Thomas Pearson Wireless Communications Facility is located in the northwest portion of the county. Here is a closer view of the site. The proposed wireless communications facility will utilize a 100 by 100 lease area along the southern portion of the county. Or, excuse me. Please know that this request is only for the conditional use permits. Tower review and permitting will come later if the conditional use permit request is granted. Here is a zoomed in area, view of the area. And here is what it looks like when we map the lease area and the access. And I apologize, it's not the southern part, it's the northern part that the tower will be in. Here is Section 11-200, which explains the criteria for allowance of conditional uses. On March 29th, BRT Group LLC submitted an application with appropriate fees for a conditional use permit request. They detailed the need for a wireless communications facility in this area. The green stars represent existing cell towers. The pink circle represents where the proposed tower will be. The two nearest towers are approximately five and six miles away. Staff conducted a site visit on April 22nd. This is the image of where the proposed facility will be. Staff is standing directly across the street from the entrance. Here is the site distance to the southeast or to the left. The furthest sign before the curve in the road is approximately 304 linear feet. And here is the site distance to the northwest or to the right. The site distance to the farthest sign, oopsie, excuse me, there we go, there it is, is approximately 330 feet. Okay. So the speed limit along West Highway 16 is 55 miles per hour. And in this picture, you can see the blue star kind of represents where the site entrance will be. And there is a suggested speed limit of 35 miles per hour before that. On the other side of the road, you can see, again, by the blue star where the proposed entrance will be. And then the suggested speed limit before you go around that bend is 30 miles per hour. So per appendix A of the Planning and Development Ordinances, the horizontal site distance for 55 miles per hour turning right is 610 feet, and turning left is 530 feet. Oops, excuse me, backwards. While the project does not meet site distance, staff feels that because of the infrequent visits to the facility, as in one to three times a month, the site distance will not be a safety concern. Staff also feels that because the project will be connected to the state highway, that the state should have jurisdiction of the site distance. And this is standing at the proposed entrance, what is directly across the street. Again, Section 11-307 states that towers will be located so that no residences are within 150 percent of the height of the tower. The tower is proposed to be 245 feet tall. The setback distance is approximately 367.5 feet, which is represented by the purple dotted line. The nearest residences are all approximately over 1,000 feet away from the proposed tower. Section 11-306 states that all towers shall be set back from the nearest edge of all roads by at least 20 feet plus the height of the tower. So 20 feet plus the 245 feet equals 265 feet. The edge of the road from the base of the proposed tower is approximately 611 feet following the access drive. Again, all permitting to connect to it will have to go through the Arkansas Department of Transportation. The tower is designed to co-locate multiple antennas. If the conditional use permit request is granted and if the tower review is approved, T-Mobile will be the first provider on the tower. Opake fencing is being required to assist with visual mitigation, something like this. Vinyl slats through chain link fence is standard for most wireless communications. But we have, there is substantial tree line in the area also that will help with visual On April 18th, a total of eight notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project parcels' boundaries. Staff received one comment in opposition of the facility. The neighbor noted site distance safety and the dangerous blind curve and wondered if the applicant was willing to camouflage the tower to assist with visual compatibility. And due to the lack of quantifiable data to guide the process of assessing compatibility, staff urges the planning board to listen to the opposition from the members of the community and to listen to the applicant's claim that the proposed use is compatible based on the need for a wireless communications facility in the area. Once and if both sides of the issue have addressed the board, please weigh the two sides to determine if the proposal has met the compatibility requirements. Any questions?
Any questions of staff? Is there anyone here that wanted to address it?
You go.
Yeah, just state your name and if you're a neighbor, locate us, please.
I am, it's Dinam Dickerson, I'm 1503 Greenborough Road. So I was the comment on opposition, and primarily from a safety perspective, that if you guys are familiar with that section of Greenborough, it's a very, very dangerous road that we have to pull in. And it's always a dodge, a dodge game to make sure no one's coming around that corner, so it is a safety issue. I had expressed concerns about, it is a 55 mile an hour road, and the safety site distance I don't think meets criteria based on that 55. So there's that, and you guys were showing the chart to show that. The other ask concern, or to see if there was anything to do about it, was to be able to check on any kind of camouflage or anything to do to help on the actual visual part of it. But the primary concern was safety. And site distance I don't think meets your own county criteria. In fact, let's see, at 55, it's 610 feet and 530 feet. I'm just going to flip through the letter I received. The other wasn't quite clear on the actual lighting on the tower. Will we, is that going to end up being a strobe light out there? I wasn't clear on how that's going to look from an impact on the area. Then from the staff's own report, where they quote, "The tower's 255 feet tall, tower coverings come standard in white. A different color may be requested to allow the tower to blend in the area better." I don't really know what that means or what the options are. That was from you guys' report. So I wanted more specifics on that. And then we go to the road visibility, which is the safety site distance issue, lighting. And then finally, as I flip through the letter we received, from the frequency of traffic, the one letter that we received said, "A few cars a month going in to check that." I mean, it is a business. And then I think the applicant's own traffic report then revised that to say, "One or two passenger type small truck, small commercial vehicles a week." So that's a little bit more, obviously not going to be high traffic, but it is traffic on a blind curve out there, which doesn't meet, and the way I interpret the rules, the site distance safety. I think that's about the bulk of the concerns. Again, in the applicant's own, and I think you mentioned this, I'm not sure if I heard it or not, on their own application, they show site distance on their app, which is also less than what I interpret the rules to be on the 55 mile an hour. So those are my main concerns, is basically safety. And I think it is commercial, in the entrance to a commercial location.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get the applicant up here in a minute, and then talk about the lighting and the color and that kind of thing. Is there anyone else here wanting to speak in opposition? Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Yes, sir, if you come forward and state your name, and if you would, focus in on the questions she had, which were lighting and then color slash blend.
Sure. My name is Tom Holloman.
Safety, but that's not yours, that's the state's issue, so I really, as I understand, the state's got control over the site distance rules on a state highway, so, okay.
But I can respond to that. My name is Tom Holloman, I live in northwest Arkansas, but I represent BRT Group LLC. They are a tower developing firm that builds towers for multiple carriers, as Sita said. Our initial tenant is going to be T-Mobile. As you probably already know, when we were given the search area by the engineers of our client, they indeed wanted to come down on Highway 16 right out just west of Fayetteville and provide better coverage along the highway in that part of the county of all the 5G technology coming on. And it was just, we felt like that was a good site. When we try to locate a property like this, we try to find the least obtrusive, obviously, and we felt really good about this particular site with all the trees and the woods, and we're way back at the back of this parcel. We did notice, of course, the highway is curvy here. So as we always do on state highways, we immediately contact the highway departments. And we have done that in this particular case, and we already have approval by them of our entrance. They've already looked at it and studied our plans. We will have to get a permit, you know, the actual permit itself from highway department, but I've got correspondence between them and us that says they will do that. So they have looked at that. So we feel like that that should satisfy the horizontal distance issue of safety. And when we say one to two cars a week, that's pretty flexible, I mean, that's pretty aggressive. It really is not that much. We like to, we don't want to misstate that kind of thing, but when there's only one carrier on the tower, like it will initially be, it's more like one or two cars a month, really, in reality, of technicians coming to check on the equipment and what have you. Now, when and if, and the desire is to get more tenants on that tower, our BRT is in contact constantly with Verizon and AT&amp;T, so over the next few years, there's a good chance that they will go on that tower as well. Well, what that means is, at the most, you might have three or four, five cars a month come out there, trucks, just to check on the equipment. It's that kind of, it's that kind of activity. So now, as far as the aesthetics of it, now this is a 245 foot, we call it self-supporting tower. They're all designed to be galvanized steel, and we've all seen all of them, all over the place. In fact, I've done these for 20 years all over the United States, and what we have found out is that the actual galvanized steel is the least obtrusive color, because it blends in with cloudy skies, and especially when you have an area of trees. You paint them white, they actually stand out more sometimes when you paint them white. We've seen those around, you see them all over Fayetteville, the white towers, the monopoles. So from a color standpoint, it will just be a kind of a light galvanized metal. And given the rural nature of the area, and the height of the existing trees out there, Ms. Dickerson, I met with her yesterday, she's a nice lady, and we had a good visit, and we always want to be good neighbors to people that, you know, have issues, and so I wanted to meet with her, and I was able to kind of look out, see what she's going to be looking at. She probably is the only residence out there that might see that tower sticking above the trees. I will acknowledge that. But it's a half a mile away. Our tower is a half a mile from her house, so a lot of times when we go make applications for cell towers, depending on where it is, we try to do the possibility of photo simulations of what a tower looks like, you know, what it's going to look like. We can't even do a photo simulation out there because of all the trees. We can't even get a point to even take a picture. And so we actually looked at that possibility. So when you get a half a mile away, photo simulations really aren't, they're difficult to do. They're not really applicable like you typically do when you're in town and trying to see what a tower's going to look like over there. So we couldn't even do a simulation of what a tower half a mile away would look like from a lady like Ms. Dickerson's house. So we, you know, of course, we're on our side of the table, we just don't feel like from a visual standpoint that it's going to really impact that area that much. Lighting, it will be lit. Any tower over 200 feet is going to have some kind of light on it. I don't have the specifics, I don't think it's a strobe light. We will have probably two or three red lights, run one red light every so many feet coming down from the top, and I don't know what the light is on the top right this second. The FAA will require us to have it lit. But it's not, it won't be a strobe light. At worst, it will be a blinking white light on top. I can get you more details on that, but it's nothing different than any other tower that you've ever seen around Washington County. So I'll leave it at that. I do have two other gentlemen here in case we have other questions, Mr. Cliff McKinney from Little Rock, Jim Grice from Kansas City. They're my associates that will come with us on zoning meetings, so I just want to introduce them while I was sitting here. So I'll leave it at that for now, and we'll be happy to answer any more questions that any of you may have.
I had one question. Is it safe to assume the lighting will be the minimal it has to be to meet FAA?
Yes.
FAA, yeah.
FAA.
Approval?
Yes.
There won't be anything in excess of that?
No.
Okay.
No, sir.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Thomas Pearson Road Wireless Facility, subject to staff recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, thank you very much. The Big Red Barn CUP.
The next project is located just west of Fayetteville and is in the city of Fayetteville's planning area. Charlotte and Donnie King are requesting a conditional use permit to be able to utilize their property to host gatherings. The property is approximately 16.52 acres. There are existing buildings, a barn, a cabin, and a storage building on the property which will be utilized in a commercial way. The current zoning for this area is agricultural, single-family residential of one unit per acre. Because the proposed use does not comply with the current zoning, the Kings are here to seek approval for a conditional use permit. Here is the site plan for the proposed event site. There is a proposed gravel parking to the north along the property boundary, and an additional entrance will be constructed if approval of the conditional use permit and preliminary large scale are approved. Here is the existing barn, which will be utilized as a gathering space. Modifications are currently being made to it so that it complies with the fire marshal safety standards. Some changes will be to add a stairway to the upstairs balcony and to make the balcony doors, entryways more wheelchair accessible. And here is an image of the cabin. The cabin can be utilized for smaller gatherings. And to assist with the visual mitigation during event times, the Kings will plant trees along the property boundary and the proposed gravel parking lot. And this is kind of where the parking lot will be. Here's kind of a close-up, and I highlighted the existing fence in red, so that will have a tree line. The property does contain existing vegetation. Here is the tree line between the barn and the nearest residence. And this is taken from upstairs. And here are some additional views of the existing vegetation. The site distance is also very adequate. Here is looking north from the driveway entrance. And here is- Here is looking north from the driveway entrance, and here is looking, and here's a little bit northeast of the driveway, so you can see what's across from it, and this is what's directly across. This is a little bit southeast, and finally, south of the driveway. And here's looking at the property from the driveway entrance. The project's parcel is located within the city of Fayetteville's planning area. It's almost surrounded by Fayetteville, with Tonnit Town and Johnson looming in the north. Per the assessor data, this is what the parcel uses in the area. The dark green represents agricultural uses, the orange is commercial use, and the purple bluish is residential use. The light gray area were not identified, and the sea green is an exempted use, such as government entities or churches. The nearest residence is approximately 273 feet away from the barn location. Other nearby residences are 619 feet, 685 feet, and 830 feet away. On April 18th, staff mailed out a total of 12 notifications to property owners within 300 feet of the project parcel's boundary. To date, one comment has been received in favor of the project, and one comment was received in opposition of the project. The neighbor in opposition is concerned about an increase in traffic, emergency response time, inadequate water supply, and septic capacity. Staff feels that items one through three of the criteria for allowance of conditional uses have been met. Compatibility unfortunately is not subjective by nature. And staff urges the planning board to listen to the support and to the opposition in order to determine whether or not the project has met the compatibility requirements. The conditions of approval are as follows. Any questions? And there are more details about the buildings and the site plan and stuff, but that's for the preliminary large scale if the CUP is approved.
Okay. It may be in that, but I was curious as to the, to the visual. You said green, you know, is it going to be trees, shrubs, is that?
Trees and shrubs, mostly trees.
Shrubs as well, not just trees?
Yes. I think the site plan calls for trees. They've already planted some junipers and some young trees here that were already existing when I visited, and then up along this upper part here will be trees. I do not know what kind.
We can get into it more if we...
Yeah, and down here, they're proposing evergreens for screening, so smaller trees or large shrubs.
Mr. Chair, I might also note that there's a lot of existing mature trees up at the entrance up there along the road.
Any other questions for staff? May I get back to you in a minute? Thank you, Sita. Anyone here who wanted to speak about this project? Neighbors, anybody? Okay. Applicant, do you need to clarify anything? I don't know that you need to address this unless there's something you want to clarify?
Not unless I know unless you have a question.
Okay.
Happy to answer.
All right. Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the CUP for the Big Red Barn, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none? Thank you. And now we're on to the... Large-scale development.
So you might have seen some of these slides before, and I'll go over them pretty quickly. So this is the preliminary large-scale request portion of the Big Red Barn. I'm just going to skip some of these slides. So here again is the exterior of the barn that exists. Here is an image of the inside. The barn is approximately 40, 40 feet tall. The ground level of the barn is approximately 5,325 square feet. It contains restrooms, a kitchen, storage areas, and a large gathering space. There are breakaway sliding glass doors on each entrance, along with an additional exit on the northern side of the barn. The max egregious travel distance, in the case of emergency allowed, without being sprinkled is 200 feet. Travel distance for the Big Red Barn is approximately 142 feet. So these are the breakaway sliding glass doors. They are motion sensitive. They open out, hence breakaway, to allow for a faster and safer exit. The upper story contains approximately 4,020 square feet. It has a large gathering space, a restroom, some office slash storage space, and the balconies located to the east and west sides. The balcony also have breakaway doors. The balcony on the west side will have stairs installed, and the final design of the stairway has not been 100% determined yet. Before construction and installation begins, the Fire Marshal will have to approve the stairway design to ensure that it meets state safety codes. Again, here is the proposed gravel parking lot. There will be trees planted along the north side of the property line and parts of the parking lot to assist with shielding the events from neighbors. Here is where the parking lot will be. Again, the close-up. So the project will also utilize a small cabin that's located on the west side of the barn. This can be utilized as a small gathering place, AKA a man cave or a groom's cabin. There's also another house along the south side, house storage area along the south side of the property. I did not get a picture of it, but it is located there, through the trees, on the other side of the residence that is nearest to the applicant's property. The septic system design has already been approved and installed per the Arkansas Department of Health. The barn and the cabin both utilize this system. It is oversized in design with a 2,000-gallon septic tank, and it's rated for 150 people at a maximum of 750 gallons of water usage per day. Again, site distance, very adequate. And, oops, looking at the property from the driveway entrance. On April 18th, staff mailed out a total of 12 notifications, and we received two, one in favor and one in opposition. The neighbor in opposition is concerned about an increase in traffic, emergency response time, and adequate water supply, and septic capacity. At this time, staff recommends approval of the Big Red Barn preliminary large-scale development with the following conditions. Any questions?
Anyone, I suppose not, but anyone here that wanted to speak regarding the project? All right. Hearing none. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Big Red Barn preliminary large-scale development request, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you very much. I believe it is Ake.
This proposal is located west of Fayetteville off of Draper Road, also known as Washington County 658. It is located entirely within the unincorporated area of the county. The proposed minor subdivision location is shown here outlined in black. There is one existing structure, a small building on proposed track two. This slide shows the original parcel of 37.44 acres. The black arrows indicate the path of Draper Road. This slide displays proposed tracks one through four of 7.11, 17.49, 2.04, and 10.80 acres respectively. Again, the black arrows indicate the path of Draper Road, and I conducted a site visit on April 4, 2019. The area is a large cow pasture with a few acres of trees, and staff recommends approval of the proposed Ake minor subdivision with conditions. Are there any questions?
Don't see anyone here that wanted to address this? Neighbors, anybody? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Ake minor subdivision, subject to staff recommendations.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none?
Thank you. On to Young Summers.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recuse myself from this one. This proposal is located south of Summers at the intersection of Young Road, also known as Washington County 460, and Summers Road, also known as Washington County 470, or 457. It is located entirely within the unincorporated area of the county. The proposed minor subdivision location is shown here outlined in black. Currently, there are no existing structures on this site. This slide shows the original parcel of 14.97 acres. The black arrow from east to west indicates Summers Road, while the arrows from north to south indicate Young Road. This slide displays proposed tracks one through four of 2.5, 2.5, 6.1, and 5.0 acres respectively. Again, the black arrow from east to west indicates Summers Road, while the arrows from north to south indicate Young Road. These provide adequate frontage for the proposed tracks. I conducted a site visit on April 4, 2019. This photo displays the land from the west. It is a large pasture. Staff recommends approval of proposed Young Summers minor subdivision with conditions. Are there any questions?
Hearing none. Anyone here from the public that wanted to address this? All right, if not?
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minor subdivision.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. To include the comments of staff, I assume?
Yes.
All right, we have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none? Thank you very much. On to White River Landing.
White River Landing Conditional Use Permit was approved by this planning board on November 10th, 2016, and after multiple appeals, it was approved, then ratified by the Corum Court, March 21st, this year. Now, the applicants are requesting preliminary large-scale development approval. Proposed White River Landing Large-Scale Development Request is located just east of Greenland. Is located inside Greenland's planning area off Schaefer Road, Washington County Road 69. The subject property is shown here outlined in black. Is situated on the east bank of the west fork of the White River. It has approximately 20% floodplain coverage on the west end where it abuts the White River. The applicant understands that before any work is done inside the floodplain boundary, floodplain development permitting approval may be required. The applicant had the property surveyed to establish the relationship of the property with the river's bank, building's relationship with the property line, and to verify site distance in both directions. Based on the survey, site distance appears adequate. Initially, planning staff, as well as county contract engineer, county road department superintendent, had concerns about Schaefer Road's ability to carry the volume of traffic the proposal calls for. Concerns were regarding drainage, subgrade width, ability of the road to support the increase in traffic, private utilities in the ditches, relocation of utilities, lack of right-of-way, safety, and whether the road should be widened or paved up to the project site. Based on these concerns, the county contracted engineer required the applicant to provide a full traffic study at that time. The results from the traffic study showed the road could handle the additional traffic, and it recommended the portion of the paved road to be striped at the intersection of Schaefer Road where it meets Highway 71. The drainage issue was mitigated by piping the stormwater under Schaefer Road to the applicant's on-site pond, so the applicant was taking the stormwater drainage on to his own property and keeping it. This diagram was taken from the traffic study showing how the road will be striped. There will be a cost share between the applicant and the county road department. The cost share amounts will be arranged with the road department, and a right-of-way permit from the state highway department will be required since the striping work will be done inside their right-of-way. Isn't that fun? It's not showing my site plan.
Works on ours.
It does? Good. I'll just keep going.
Go ahead.
Is it, is it working right here?
No, a minute ago you had...
Is it working back here? And I've just got a little bit to talk about the site plan, and I'll get straight through it. The site plan shows how the fire lane and parking are proposed to be configured in relation to the proposed building. The fire lane is shown to be minimum of 24 feet wide, and the turning rate I know less than 38 feet. There will be 60 parking spaces plus three ADA accessible parking spaces and six overflow parking spaces near the pond, for a total of 69 parking spaces. Again, I apologize for the site plan, I'm not sure what's happening here. Many outdoor side elements are proposed within close proximity to the northern property line, which is approximately 12 feet from the northwestern corner of the building expansion area. Outdoor side elements include an outdoor grilling area, smoking area, volleyball, horseshoes, and they're all shown here in green, excuse me, in blue. In the applicant's letter of intent, they also mentioned they intend to build meandering footpaths down to the river's edge. These paths are not shown on the site plan, but it should be noted that any grading or permanent structures built within the floodplain area will require floodplain permit approval prior to construction. There we go. The different components of the building, of the proposed building, are shown here, color-coded. The existing building is shown in red, with the enclosed addition shown in green and the covered porch addition shown in yellow. The photo shows the building as it exists today. This floor plan shows the entire proposed building, color-coded like the previous slide to illustrate the existing and proposed portions of the building. Red is existing, green is proposed, and yellow is proposed covered porch area. The bride and groom's changing rooms each have a bathroom and closet, and both have emergency exits. This floor plan has been approved by the Fire Marshal with conditions. The square footage of the covered porch area puts the building over the 5,000-square-foot threshold that triggers the fire suppression sprinkler requirement for the building. So the Fire Marshal has stated that to remove the covered porch area from that applicable square footage, there to be no tables or chairs or any seating in the covered porch area. The A2 fire classification of the building depends on this exemption. Tables and chairs in these areas will constitute a violation of the fire code and the conditions of approval. The applicant has submitted a planting plan with plant selection and location emphasizing buffering the noise from the building when crossing the northern property line, as well as screening the parking lot area and its associated activities from the neighbors to the east. This planting plan is subject to change, but any changes must be reviewed and approved by the planning staff. Neighbor notification letters were sent by certified mail to eight neighbors in accordance with county ordinance. No public comments have been received regarding this large-scale development request. Being that all the objective checklist items have been met, staff recommends approval of the White River Landing Preliminary Large-Scale Development Permit Request with the conditions compiled from both the CUP and the large-scale staff reports. The conditions that weren't in the large-scale staff report are shown here in red, and there's just a couple. Speed limit sign along Schaefer Road, they were going to move that into a place a little more visible, as suggested from the road department. And then, you know, typical requirements from the, from the utilities. If you're going to relocate it, then you got to pay for it, this type of stuff. Thank you. I'll take questions if you have them.
Nothing for now. Is there anyone here from the public that wanted to address it? For those of you who weren't on this board... For those of you who weren't on this board before, I see the proponents in the back, so if you have any questions, because it was sixteen, I think, at least three of us heard it, a lot about it. Um, so any questions? All right, if none, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the White River Landing Preliminary Large-Scale Development with the staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? I really appreciate the buffering and screening plan, looks very thorough. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, on to other business?
Yes, sir. At the direction of the executive staff, the planning staff is looking to the other cities and counties, uh, for examples of how they conduct conditional use permit review, what the cemental requirements are, and what the pros and cons of some of their methods are, so we may change up our method to be more efficient and transparent on the requirements with regard to assessing compatibility and processing CUPs. The problem seems to be that if, if an applicant submits everything they're required to, there's no way of knowing whether their CUP would be considered compatible before the planning board hearing. The subjectivity of our code seems to leave the opportunity wide open for the neighbors to stop a CUP based on the, uh, based on several things, but a lot of times seems to be in the not-in-my-backyard emotions. To address this problem, we'd like to consider a more objective approach to assessing compatibility for uses other than what are already allowed by right. Planning staff is eager to hear your thoughts, though, on modifying the CUP review to become more objective. So please reach out to me for more in-depth conversation as your time allows. Regarding planning staff's recommendation to the planning board, withholding the recommendation on compatibility has come before you a few times now. The reason behind the withholding has been due to the controversial nature of the projects, whether it was opposed neighbors or some other issue. With conditional use permits, especially the controversial ones, the planning department lacks an objective way to assess compatibility and recommendation, uh, and the recommendation to approve or deny a CUP becomes based on opinion, uh, and becomes a one side versus the other, which can easily end up as an appeal to be heard by the courts. We'd like to keep our CUPs out of court while still conducting a very high level of review. Regarding the minor subdivision changes, I have a meeting soon with Regional Plan to discuss their thoughts on minor subdivision changes we're looking at, and I'll keep you posted on that, too. But I would just ask you to, to consider, uh, some of the things that you do like and some of the things you don't like, some of the things you, you understand very well and some things you don't about the CUP, and, and let's open dialogue, you know, whether that's between all of us or one-on-one, whether that's over email, phone, or we'd be very happy for you, some of you to come in and visit us at the office. Uh, we don't get many, uh, visitors, so, uh, please feel free. Either way, I'd like to hear from you, and, uh, and we're gonna, just kicking this ball down the road and see if we can get it to stop somewhere good.
Yeah. Nathan, on your, uh, compatibility on CUPs, you're right, it's subjective, but I thought our existing policy sort of drove the process of you, planning, I want to say you, planning department, and the neighbors, and the developer, to develop mitigating things that are pretty unique to every circumstance.
Sure.
Like tonight, we heard of natural trees, we have some, in the past, we've had birmingham. And so are you all still gonna drive towards something even though you're not gonna quote, recommend it?
Well.
You would drive towards something that you would have previously recommended? Is it gonna change the work process in?
We can definitely use precedent from what we have recommended on similar projects in the past, but one of the problems that we hit is that a lot of these, uh, these innovative methods that we might use, or, 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 you know, if we come up with a good idea on what might mitigate something, well, it's not in our code. And we can't require that without it being in our code.
Yes, but if it is required in order to encourage a compatibility review, um, that's been the hammer that, that we've had in the past. I guess I just don't wanna get it to where we're planning it here.
Right.
In this public session where somebody says, "Well, I can see it," and we would, you know, say, "Hey, how about you, proponent, will you put the trees in or not?" And we kinda have a negotiation here. It seem like to me that's what the planning process is for, so I'm a little, that's just my observations, I'm not opposed to anything, I'm just saying, um, I understand the court thing, but if you look at all of the cases we've reviewed statistically, how many have gone to court?
Sure.
Not that many, and I don't recall any that have actually reversed what the planning board did. It's more of what the Quorum Court's actions have been, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's never been the planning board's decision that's been overturned.
Very little.
So I'm not sure we're working on the right challenges, but nevertheless, I think compatibility, it is subjective, and it does depend and vary, uh, by location and by mitigation efforts and by what the surrounding neighborhood. So I'm open to our objective, but I don't know how you're gonna draft that, but, yeah.
Look into the other cities, I've got some contacts at Fayetteville and Springdale that I think are, have their, uh, head in the right place, um, but we're still looking to, uh, to get some, some feedback from some of the other municipalities. Um, very interested in what regional planning has to say, we're a member of their, uh...
Yeah, regional might be helpful. Municipalities seem like less so, because that's our challenge, we're in such transition. The county is in transition, you know, city of Fayetteville has been zoned.
Right.
In and out, now they're kinda backing up a little bit, but it's been there for a long time, so people have been able to plan. When you've got a county that's in transition, maybe that'll be helpful, maybe not, so I'll be curious to see what you find, though.
Yes, sir.
Any thoughts or comments?
That's all staff has for other business. Thank you.
Okay. You retain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.